Okay, all right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the public hearing for the Newport School Board Budget as followed by the regular school board meeting. I will call the public hearing to order first. The Newport School Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, January 12th, 2023 at 5:00 PM at the Sugar River Valley Regional Technical Center. Lou Thompson room for the purpose of presenting the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget for RSA 32, colon, 5, 1. Tim?
Bill?
I work with you.
Bert?
Let's call them soon.
Steve?
Steve Morrison.
And Jenna Darling here. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please proceed. Hey. All right. So Donna, do you want to start us off with the public hearing for the documents that we have?
Sure. I am actually going to let Diane speak on this, the documents that you have in front of you. And there are two packets over there. One is for the budget hearing and one is for the regular board meeting. So we wanted to make sure we divided it up for everyone.
So everything is in draft form. And what I'm proposing for warrant articles for the school board to decide whether they want to move forward with them. One is the MS 26 for the budget and then the other one is the MS ESP, which is the default budget.
We also have included a capful budget and then the revenue page.
Before we make any movement or motions on warrant articles, we'll open it up for public comment. I'm assuming that the two people I have signed up are for public comment for the regular board meeting or did you like to go ahead and speak on the budget?
I have questions about the budget, but I think you can open them.
Okay. Do you want to start with the warrant articles?
Then I guess we'll go for the question.
Okay.
Okay, so Article 1 is to choose a moderator for collective treasure for the ensuing one year and to choose one member of the school board to be ensuing three years and one member of it ensuing one year. You have two seats available. Speaking of that change, I'll mention Article 1.
Article 2, the operating budget. Shall the Newport School District raise and appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately, the amount set forth on the budget posted with a warrant or as amended by vote of the first session for the purposes set forth therein totaling $21,425,377. Should this article be debated, default budget shall be $20,676,544, which is the same as last year with certain adjustments required by previous action of the district or by law, or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with the RSA 40,13, 10, and 16. To take up the issue of a revised operating budget only. Note A, the above operating budget includes the sum necessary to fund a one-year collective bargaining agreement reached between the Newport School Board and the Newport Support Staff, NSSNEA, which calls for the following estimated increase in salaries and benefits for year 2023-2024. It's an estimated increase of $332,677. Favorable vote on this article shall be considered not only for the approval of the proposed operating budget for the 2023-24 fiscal year, but also the approval of the cost item set forth under Note A above. Such sums representing the additional costs attributable to the increase in salaries and benefits required by the new agreement over those that would be paid at current staffing levels in accordance with the most recent collective bargaining agreement. The tax impact is $1.85 per thousand. Newport School Board recommends, I don't believe the budget advisory committee has not made their recommendation. So we'll start there for Article 2. Any questions on Article 2? Did you want to start there, Lisa, if you had questions about the budget?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Yes, I would come to the podium.
I just, I have a couple of questions and I just want to say generally, I'm sorry, I'm Lisa Frey now, school board member, I mean, union co-president, first grade teacher, and Newport citizen. Oftentimes, a union works to help get the budget passed, so I want to just make sure that I understand the budget. So I had some questions about it. And I think that probably my questions are because things have gotten moved around a bit, but I just want to make sure that I'm understanding them. The first one was the 2211 line. It's in several different places. The position of Director, Coordinator, Executive Assistant. In one space, it goes up from 53,971 to 108,732. And then there was one that goes from 15,709 to 70,000 and one that goes from 0 to 50,000 for a total of 159,052. Are those moved from other lines?
Some of it's moved from other lines and there is additional.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
So the 2211, 111 is one of the positions from Donna's line, the superintendent line. Last year has moved to my line. The position is new, it's just in a different place in the budget. And the 2210, is that the 50,000 that you're referring to?
Yeah.
That is for new curriculum materials, district-wide.
It's under Director, Coordinator, Executive Assistant. It was at 0 and then it went to?
I just wanted to know if you were interested.
Yeah.
Are you still on 2211?
No, well, it's, this one was under, there were several of them. This one was under 2400.
24.
Yeah. It was all the same positions and it seemed like a big jump, so I wasn't sure if we were just moving folks around or lines around.
Please, you have this.
Yep.
What can you do?
It's under 30, high school?
30.
Yep. I'm sorry, I don't have the page right. It was under the high school.
We don't have a page.
So like it was, each school it looked like had that same thing, but then in other places it was 0, so I wasn't sure if it's just moving people around. I just wanted to be able to explain why it looks like there's 159,000.
We don't have a page 30.
No, 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 no. It's high, high school is line 30.
Right, but the page on the budget, there's page numbers.
Okay, that's what I'm looking for. It's page 25?
Page 25. There's a 0, that's 15.
No, that's, that's the one that, in the current budget, it's 15,709 and it went up to 70,000. So it's an increase of 54,291.
I'm still lost. So 2400 and then what's the?
And then the other one, it looks like it's Richards was the one that went from 0.
When it says 2400, then there's like three numbers next.
What numbers? So it says 2400 and then under there's a whole bunch of other numbers?
Right, it's, it's 111.
Thank you.
So 58, it went from 71 to 80,000.
The one that, oh, I guess it's under 2332. It went from 35 to 70,000.
Oh, I see, 15 to 70.
It's, I'm sorry, it's 35 in the default.
If you found it, what page are you on, just so we could?
25 at the very top.
Oh, so she said it's 2332.
So I believe.
There's a couple of them.
I believe what happened with this one is it was split between the middle and high school and when it went into this budget, it's just put in the high school. So I think it's not, no longer listed with middle school and it's just listed at the high school, so that's the reason for that jump.
So we're not talking about new positions, they're just?
No, it's the same position, same, it's just instead of being split between the middle and the high school, it was just reflected only in the high school.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right. Line 225, 130 overtime. This is listed again in a couple of different places, under salary positions. Are we paying salary positions, salaried staff overtime?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
There was one place that it was summer work.
Yeah, it's like summer, so it's like summer staff.
Okay. 2510, 390, contracted services, non-instruction.
Point of order, Ms. Chairman, could you please say what page you're reading from? You said 2510.
Sorry, 2510.
Would be page 4.
Okay.
So it's contracted services and it's all been zeroed out, so I was just wondering what that is.
So that all went to Chad's budget? It was, it was like software?
Okay.
It went to the computer budget?
And then, sorry, I can find the pages. I think it's still on page 5, Maintenance and Facilities, 2610. It looks like on line 431, I'm sorry, so 2620, line 431. We go from 41,769 to 290,000.
So we went from being in different schools, so we had it throughout the budget in every school, now it's just district-wide.
Okay. So I'm assuming the trash removal is the same thing?
Same thing, yeah.
Okay. Wow, our trash went up.
Yeah. Now, we pulled them from the buildings and put it district-wide.
So I think that that would explain it, because looking at it, it looks like the building and operation budget as a total went up $552,187 when I added up all of the increases.
Diane, can you explain why, the rationale behind the why we decided to do that, especially for repairs and?
It's just so that it's one pool of money and he can use it for whatever buildings really need the repairs. So it's, it's just a way to divide it without us doing budget transfers constantly. It's a district-wide to use in all buildings.
Okay, so we're not really increasing the Buildings and Maintenance budget by 550?
No, not.
Okay. Diane, I know that Mr. Clark called you about this one today, but?
It's in a grant.
Okay, thank you.
Well, what is it, so that way? It was instructional pairs.
Yeah. It was zeroed out and I had a moment of panic.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it a grant that we?
Title 1. Title 1.
Just want to make sure that we know it's a grant that we've already secured.
Yes. The same thing for summer school? That line went down? Yeah.
All right. Then the other question I had, and I can find the page number, but it's line 222 and under Richards.
222.
Sorry, I'm trying to read. Okay, here, it's page 12? Sorry, page 11. Library Media Services, it's at 0. So I was just wondering, so are we not going to have a media teacher next year at Richards?
Is that one that we put?
No, that, the Library Media Services you're talking about? No. Right above it, it was library, yeah.
On line 112, it says salaries, teacher, it's been 0 now.
Yeah. And underneath it's, it's related services, which I assume is what we currently have, but we aren't budgeting for a teacher.
It's 0 for this year too.
Yeah, we didn't have.
Right, we don't have one right now, right.
So it's not being?
So it's not being budgeted for the next year either?
Next year, yeah.
Well, we will have a, you will have your?
I mean, she's in there, it's just been 113.
Yeah, but she's not, so we won't have a teacher.
Right.
Well, she's going to be, she's, because she's on an alternative plan, we're keeping her under this budget line.
Okay, okay. And then the computer-assisted instruction, which is just a little further down, has also been zeroed out?
If that goes, so everyone knows, that's down on page 12, I believe?
Yeah.
2225?
So this is Richards? So Chad's budget got put district-wide as well, just like?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. And then I just want to be really clear, because it looks, you have to really look for it, but then going down for preschool, it's on page 14. We shifted, so it looks like a gigantic jump for preschool, going from 0 to 109.
They get moved out of special ed.
But yeah, that's what I was going to say, but I wanted to be really clear that we're not adding?
Positions, no.
Teachers, it's, we're moving them out of the special ed line because they're not going to be case managers.
Yeah, right.
But, so does that mean we're adding a case manager to cover preschool?
So the thing with the preschool program, right, is that it's not a special ed program. And so that, so we're taking money out of the special ed budget and you're not supposed to use money from the special ed budget for a regular ed program. So we're just fixing that by putting it in the regular, the general ed budget.
Okay, okay, thank you. All right. That's my question. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Kessler, do you have a hand up?
Yeah. First off, if I understood what I saw here, you were about to approve a warrant article on your budget, but my understanding of SB 2 communities is you also need to state what the default budget is when you do a warrant article for your budget. And my other thing, my big concern is, is there going to be a hearing? Are you going to present your budget to us so we can understand where things have been moved, how your budget is built? I mean, your expenses are up about $2 million, your revenues are up a little bit too, so is there going to be a presentation from the board or the administration of the budget for next year?
We actually did three of them.
This is the public hearing?
Right, this is a public hearing, but we presented the budget three times.
To who?
To the public.
When?
We did, we have the date.
You're basically saying you're not presenting us tonight at your public hearing with your budget?
We presented it publicly and we were looking for feedback on the budget based on these hearings.
My understanding is that's what the public hearing is for, so, okay.
Yes, Bert, I'm sorry, go ahead. I'm starting with the date.
I think Jeff's point is, in the public hearing, it's the presentation, and what we did before, I'm not sure, meets the criteria of a public hearing. That means that we have to go through it from beginning to end for the public hearing statute to be satisfied by what we've done.
Okay, okay. If that's what we have to do, then we should do it. We do, we do. And I'm sorry, yes, Biddy?
Following up on Mr. Kessler's presentation, you have to go through it line by line and you have to explain why each item has changed and where it's been moved to. It's very difficult to follow the way you have done this now. I have a question about the preschool comment, though. I wondered when our preschool became a non-special ed preschool. It never was a public preschool.
It's been a regular, since, I mean, we just started in July, but it was a, it's not a special ed program. It's not on the approved special ed program list. I don't, I can go back and ask the state if they ever had a record of it as a special ed program, but to my knowledge, it was, it was not ever a special ed program. It was a, it was a regular education program that has special ed students in it as well.
So you are inviting any child in town to be part of the preschool? It's not limited by numbers anymore?
It's always limited by numbers based on the teachers, because it's a preschool program, so you only have certain teachers, but it's not a special ed program. So it's not only for special ed students. You have a population that is 50% regular education and 50% public education, I mean, special education, so therefore it's not a special ed program.
Well, potato, potato is the same thing. It was always a program under special education that we had to provide for that age, and so it was a partner program where regular students were allowed to come, but it was not preschool for come one, come all. I'm just wondering where that shift of thinking came from.
I'm not sure, because I wasn't here. All I know is that it is not a special ed approved program and therefore it has both regular ed students and special ed students in it. So the reason why we can't fund a teacher for that program out of the special ed budget is because they teach both the regular ed students and the special ed students.
I think you really ought to investigate that, because that's not correct.
Hi, in order to meet the, in order to meet the statute of the public hearing, I'm going to go through line by line.
You need to do, so you guys have your list.
Are we doing this report, though? Because this is?
Oh, I'm sorry. Hang on, I'm done.
Then we continue to another line in order to do, yeah. It doesn't really mean that you take every line item and go through. It means that you do it sufficiently that the public understands what the changes are. If you're doing a particular item, just express that item as we moved one person from here to here, as you have done, but the difference is someone having to ask for it as opposed to us presenting it. The statute requires us to present it in its entirety.
What would be, I am confident in the administration that we could go section by section in this budget and inform the public. What I don't know is if people watching from home would be able to follow along, and I don't know that that's necessarily reasonable for them either. So I'm comfortable either way of either moving forward and/or doing it again.
Can I request a visa so I can talk to Biddy? Mr. Kessler, if you could?
One concern I have about you trying to continue tonight is you have no presentation material already, as in the past. I think if you look at what has been done at hearings in the past couple of years, you've had PowerPoints or whatever where it's explained, this is the change here, this is the change here, it's available, people can pull it up at home or you have it here, so we can follow those changes, but here it's like, well, page 25, line whatever, goes over to page 5, this line, I mean, it becomes hard to follow and understand just what the thought process is and what you're trying to accomplish next year with education, so.
And that's what I was?
Yeah, so. And I would like, like when we presented the last time with the PowerPoint and had my administrative team here and they were able to talk about their individual budgets and what the impact was on their individual budgets, I think that that would be more what, what we're looking, what we should do, is just have them here to be able to present their piece of the budget.
Okay. That sounds good. That sounds good. So what I'd like to do now is pick that date.
I just wanted to do a, do a, it would look like timeline.
Yeah.
Okay, so January 17th is the last day to hold a one-page hearing.
Okay. All right, thoughts from the board of the administration by the 17th? How quickly can you have it together? I mean, you have the PowerPoint presentation from?
I just, I would just need my team. So we have the PowerPoint presentation, they would just look over it, make sure all their numbers are still right, and then they would be able to present.
Okay. Anything from the board? Tim?
I want to see, but, I think it's a nice meeting, a rebook. That said, to have one meeting before the 17th, which technically, so does that push you out anymore to give you, could you do it before the next meeting?
No, because this technically wouldn't qualify. What Bert's saying is that, and what Jeff is saying and Biddy is saying, are that we need to present it.
Present, then, okay.
Right. Even, even though we labeled this as such, it really isn't, because we need to comply with the law, and so therefore to recess it, to a date certain, is an unacceptable result.
Okay. Bill, I know Mondays are good, no? Okay.
I mean, unless you want to do it in the middle of the day.
No, no. I just want to make sure we have a quorum of the board here. So let's, can we do Monday with the three of us here? That gives ample?
I'm probably not here on a Monday, but it's got a selectance meeting.
Tuesday? Tuesday, the 17th? Is that good for you, Steve? Okay, that gives us a quorum of the board, that gives enough notice. I'm not worried about the PowerPoint presentation, because it's already made, but that gives enough notice for the admin team. So we will recess until then, but before we recess that part of the meeting, I would like to just set the deliberative. I want to make sure we have winter carnival right around deliberative time. So our window for the deliberative is what time?
February 4th, February 11th.
4th through the 11th of February, and they are using our facilities, and I want to be respectful of that. Bert, do you have any thoughts?
I'm just saying, I believe that between the five over on that side, we have all of the knowledge that we need. PowerPoint is not necessary. It wasn't 40 years ago, it wasn't 10 years ago. And I take somewhat exception to it. Not everything on that can I read when it goes up. So therefore, until that becomes something that everybody in this room can read, it is, it's not a statutory requirement for it to have a PowerPoint. So if in fact we could go to each section and say what we've done, like moving from here to there, et cetera, which I believe all that knowledge is here, we could go forward. here to there, et cetera, which I believe all that knowledge is here, we could go forward, I believe, because we posted it correctly, but we, the interpretation of having the public hearing doesn't meet the statutory requirement.
John?
Just for people who aren't here, to have the PowerPoint available online would be, even if you gave it to me on your PDF, then I could at least put it on the thing so that when it gets played over and over and over through the month, when people want to be able to see it, that would be very helpful.
I, I really think, Bert, that we need, that we need to recess until a later date. I think Jeff is right, that PowerPoint may not be helpful for people here, but it may be helpful for people at home. So I really think that that would be the better choice. And if it has to come down to a vote, that's fine. So I would move that we recess it until the 17th at 5:00 p.m.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Okay. I do need to set the date for the deliberative, though. We need to do that.
Seventeenth at what time?
5:00 p.m. And then Lou Thompson, here.
Summer carnivals at the night, 10:00.
No. Do you have the schedule for the winter carnival?
I know it's the past, it's the pageant, but...
It's, it's all week. So the, the seventh, the 7th through the 12th. So, Bert, you had said historically, and I checked with Viddy as well, that deliberatives had been in the evening during the week, and if that works well, I think that that's easier than trying to force a weekend, Sunday, interrupting people going to church services. So if we did, it would be great to have all aboard there. Bill, where is your flexibility that week? That's the week of February 6th.
So I made myself available for the 4th of the 11th, because when I looked at the budget schedule, the deliberative was either the 4th or the 11th. I'm on vacation starting the 5th through that Friday. So I took the 4th off intentionally because that was the date that I saw on the calendar.
Right.
And the 11th is the end of my vacation, we're back in town, so I would have no problem with the 11th.
What was wrong with the 4th? I thought it was the 4th, too.
You can have the 4th.
Okay. Is the 4th okay with everybody? I'd like to have the whole Board there.
What day are we going to?
Saturday. Usually it's Saturday morning.
Is that how it's done in the House? Yeah.
Saturdays are on weekends, but no drinks on Saturdays.
Okay.
Yeah, that's...
And I'd like to keep it on Saturday, the 4th. That way it doesn't interfere, interfere with any winter carnival activities. And we usually do it in the morning.
What time?
Nine. Okay.
Do we have it in the gym?
It's in the gym. So with that, we will recess the public hearing until Tuesday, the 17th, at 5:00 in this room. I apologize for not having the PowerPoint slides there. We will have that fixed and ready to go at that time. And we will also discuss the support staff contract and the reasoning behind that as well. Okay? All right. I think if we recessed, I don't have to take a vote. All right. So we'll pivot to the regular Board meeting. Stephen, are you here? I don't have to call back to order, but I always forget to call you into our order, so I want to make sure that I do that. Thank you for being here today.
Do we, we should do a motion?
We do.
They abstain.
They abstain, yeah, we're all set. Yep. Okay. Are there any adjustments to the regular school board meeting agenda?
I wanted to just talk about the correct, the correct filing period because it was put, I don't know if people are aware of that. And then I'd like to move the solar proposal. I'm going to guess before Derek, Mr. Furrow and Derek Furrow, because he is not here at this time, so if I can do it then. And then I'd like to add in the future Farmers of America, they actually have a, an event that they would like to attend.
So let's add the filing period. Okay. I take that back. We're going to move the solar proposal to A, followed by bullying agenda B, see the FFA event C, and we'll talk about the filing period as D. Okay? Is, I will move to approve those adjustments. Is there a second?
Before you do on the filing?
Yep.
Okay. I believe the filing is there because of my conversation with you about the one-year position.
No, the filing dates, uh, we gave out the incorrect filing dates at the last meeting.
Okay. All right. Then we get to...
Okay. All right. I need a roll call vote. Tim?
I'm here, aye.
Bill?
I'm here, aye.
Bert?
Bert Spalding, a senior, aye.
Steve?
Steve Morris, aye.
And Jenna Darling, aye. Okay. That brings us to public comment for the regular Board meeting.
Who can vote it?
No worries. Okay, thank you. John?
I just wanted to make a comment about, since we're going into budget, we're going into the new year, make a comment about the students in the last five or six, almost six years that I've been working here, not through the school, but with NCTV, kind of peripherally. I have met and worked with some really great students who really, you know, that I, they're remarkable kids. And I want everybody to know that, that we produce a lot of good students in this school, and there are problems, but the fact that we can, that, that some, that people can come through here and, and do well is something that we need to note. And yes, we need improvement, we need to improve our scores and all that, but, but some things are going well, some things are going right, and I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you so much, Stephen, I appreciate that. Hey, is there any other public comment? Viddy?
My, I'll leave it for that one.
That's okay.
So I wanted to talk to you about Article 1 in your warrant, which is the election of officers. As you know, the moderator and the clerk are elected on a one-year basis, which really doesn't make a lot of sense. And there is an alternative provision in the IRSAs to, by petition, change the term for the clerk and for the moderator. One of, oddly enough, the school district cannot do it. It has to be by petition. I spoke to Bud Fitch in the Secretary of State's office, and I also have the RSA with me. And it's only 25 people who have to sign the petition, but the rationale is we, or whoever holds those offices, get elected, serve for the next election, and then can participate in the election process when it comes to counting and certifying the vote because we're on the ballot. It's a, it's a continuous problem when you elect somebody on an annual basis for their ability to participate in the, in the duties they are assigned, so to speak. I went through the IRSAs tonight, and I couldn't find the comparable language that governs the town election officials who are on the ballot versus the school, but everything else in the statutes apply to both town clerk, school clerk, town moderator, school moderator. So I am proposing that we have a petition to change the term to two years, which would be consistent with the number of years that the town moderator and the town clerk is elected. In the, in the statutes, the town officials must be elected on the even years. In the school, it doesn't matter because it's annual. So the petition would read to some effect that we would change the term of office for the clerk and the moderator to a two-year term effective the election of '24, not necessarily this election. That gives time for it to be fair, really. These are not positions that people seek. In great droves, as you know, we've had a, prior to me, we've had a moderator for the 35, 40 years. I have no idea how long Bob Scott has been the town clerk, but I think just slightly after Moses. So I think it would make sense because it is not simply just standing there and holding a gavel. There are significant rules and regulations for the duties of both, and by the time you have really understood it, then your year is over, and you really don't have the opportunity to continue and be as effective as you could be if you didn't have to run every year. So I am proposing that. I will draw up a petition, which I am happy to give to the superintendent to run by your attorney, but unfortunately, it can't come from the district, it has to come from the public. And so that's my story.
Thank you, Viddy, I didn't know that, but that makes a lot of sense.
I didn't realize it either. When I looked at your warrant, I thought, well, that doesn't make sense. And then I researched the statute, I talked to Bud Fitch in the Secretary of State's office, and yes, indeed, it's an annual election. And we've never really paid attention to it in the same way because we always had the same people.
Right.
Did you have a question of me?
671 colon 33, Roman 3.
Hold on, let me grab my book.
She's talking about for next year. But she's talking about for 2024.
Again, 671, 3?
33.
Oh, 33.
Vacancies?
Roman 2 is school board. Roman 3, vacancies in the office of moderator shall be filed by vote at a school meeting or election, provided that until a replacement is chosen. School district clerk shall serve as moderator or shall appoint a moderator pro 10 or. I don't see the limitation in that statement, so therefore, I believe, once you're there, Virginia, we pour cement around your feet and you stay.
Yes, well, thank you for that. There is a, unfortunate, there is no limitation to any annual carnival, but there is a provision to the statute.
To, it's an alternative election, and it has to be by petition. Let me, I can grab it if you hold on a sec. Hold it out, but I...
That's okay, Virginia. We take the information in and make a research and find the, find the right path.
Donna? Can I, can I just be, um, so, a petition warrant article is fine, it had to be to you, or to the SAU by the 10th of January, according to my calendar. So I think we would have already had to have received it to put it on the warrant articles for voting this year. The voters would have said yes or no whether they wanted to change it to a two- or three-year term, and then it would take effect next year. But I think we've already missed the deadline, if I'm reading this right. I will have to look at that, but the section I'm looking for is 271...
1, colon 6A, optional term. 671, colon 6, small a, optional term. And I will, I'll look at that date.
Yeah, I think it's that, but I know we do it the next year, put it on the line, it would take effect the following...
Indeed, the 10th.
Yeah. Sorry.
That's quite all right. I was talking to Bud Fitch on the 10th, and I thought I'd give you the courtesy of the conversation, but shame on me. Okay.
It doesn't negate that it still... Yeah, I think we should...
Sure, could pursue for the next election. I mean, it really makes more sense to have a clerk and a moderator for a longer period, but...
Because you get all the training, and then you go.
Exactly. Thank you.
Secretary of State, not under wards, so it's got to be read carefully and interpreted correctly, so. Time, time will do it, but Virginia...
Oh, the petition, yes, I'm not worried about that. There is a, the model petition is in the statute.
Yes, I've got it here, 671.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other public comments? Because I know several people walked in. Okay. With that, public comment will come to a close, and we'll move on to approving the public minutes of December 22nd, 2022. Is there a motion on those minutes?
So no.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Okay. All right, that brings, there are no non-public minutes. Okay. Here's the only one. All right, that brings us to Stephen for the student report.
Yes, last time. So I have four things to be on, three for the board and one for the public. So first thing, last week, there was a new student group created called the Technical Student Association. This is similar to FFA, FBLA, and other CTAs, so as we have, we're serving the engineering students, as well as any students interested in further in their leadership skills in the area of technology. Secondly, the wrestling team is currently holding a fundraiser until January 30th. They are selling little Caesar's kits to like make pizzas, breads, stuff of that sort. Bought some themselves, that goes to the 30th.
But how would, if somebody were interested, how would they get?
Um, you can, you can reach to, I believe, Mr. Miller or any of the members of the wrestling team, I'm not sure exactly who's on it, but you can reach to any of them in the next couple of weeks. The third thing I have is that there's some new Tiger apparel coming into, into the school store. Over the next couple of weeks, we're getting sweatpants, hoodies, and tumblers, so those will be very nice to see students going around the halls, and hopefully some people outside of school, too, getting some. And for the public, I'm not sure which camera I need to look at, but for the public, senior parents, there's a virtual meeting next Wednesday at 6:00 p.m. Make sure you attend that one.
There you go. Any questions from the Board, Stephen? Yeah. Okay, so that's going to bring us to the Norwich Solar. So tonight, we have Jim...
Marion.
Marion, joining us from Norwich Technologies to discuss solar projects with long-term power.
Does anyone have a mutation?
Yes. Oh, sorry.
Yes. I don't have a copy of that. Yes. Uh, so, Marion, Norwich Technologies, Norwich Solar, we're the organization that built the solar array down by the wastewater treatment facility and then up on Turkey Hill. We have another array we're building in Newport, and we would love to have the school be one of the off-takers for that, using the power. So we can go to the next slide. So right up front, the benefits to Newport Schools, first year savings of around $16,500. And we can, at any point in time you have a question, feel free to stop me, and I'm happy to clarify. Just assuming straight-line savings for 25 years, that's $412,000 for savings for the schools. Newport Schools is always guaranteed 10% discount off EverSource rates. So no matter what happens, rates go up, rates go down, you always get a 10% discount. It's a group net metering agreement, which allows the school to participate in competitive supply contracts, so that's an important note. So you can still go out and do competitive supply and bring down your rates that way. This solar agreement does not impact that ability to do that. No capital required, so the third party is responsible for ownership, maintenance, taxes. School is not obligated to do any of those things. You just receive a check at the end of the year, and the array will be located in EverSource territory. It's actually, I don't know if everybody's familiar with it, I think it's Paradise Road and 103. It's in between there. And this is an educational array we did up in Twinfield, Danville. I'm stalling for you here.
I know, I don't know why it's...
solar array. And the taxes are the system owner's responsibility. The next picture is a picture of the site, right there. And you would be, there's a missing graphic there, but you would take about 50% of the offtake from that.
Sorry. What is that? I will ask as soon as it first. Sorry, I don't know why it's not. We're having some trouble seeing the text.
Yeah, the text should be in white, and it's black for some reason.
Or it's just small.
No, the text is, there's text there and it's black. There you go. If you do it that way, maybe people can see it at least.
I don't know what's going on. Just maybe keep it small then, just keep it small, something like that.
So, great, thank you. So how does a net metering agreement work? I'll read what's up there for you so everybody can see it. And I left my glasses in the car, so this is bigger and I can read this easier. A net metering agreement allows the solar array, and a net metering agreement is often abbreviated NMA. So if you see NMA, it's Net Metering Agreement. Allows the solar array owner to sell the output of the array at a discount to the off-taker. Off-taker is the term the school would be. Each month, you continue to pay your electric bill as normal, and at the end of the calendar year, the system owner will pay Newport Schools 10% of the value of the net metering credits generated from that array. The total net metering kilowatt hours generated from the array, we try to match with the school's load. So the way this works is if you produce, if you use 100 units, we try to have the output of the array match the 100 units. If we get $10 off for those 100 units, or if we get $10 of revenue for those 100 units we generate, you get, if I said $10, you get $1, 10%. So, it's very simple. The school goes forward, nothing changes in terms of your billing, but you get a check from the system owner at the end of the year for 10% of the credit value generated off the array. Sorry, this is all going to be black, and I don't know why.
So, any other questions so far?
I'm just confused at how...
We don't have to do any more?
Isn't it awesome?
There's got to be, there's always a catch.
There isn't.
There's got to be a catch. Because I read it, it looks good, like, on the packet, but it just seems like you've just given us money, right?
So, first, your first slide said, for example, the first year, we'd get...
$16,500.
$16,500, but that's approximate, right?
Yeah.
Because that's, it's based on how much you all are, how many credits you were given, correct?
Correct. So it's assuming that a normal year, you know, some years would be sunnier than others.
Right.
But a normal year, it would generate $165,000 worth of credits. You would get 10% of those credits.
Okay. The school does not have to change anything with EverSource. All we're doing is we're taking... You're saying approximately 50% of the load from this array?
Correct.
And then there would be other units that would take the remaining?
Other, other businesses would take.
Other businesses that would take the remaining portion of that array?
Yes.
And then they would get their 10%?
They would do the same exact thing.
So, does the tax break probably then, or something?
Yeah, so I've got these...
The company gets a tax break probably, right?
Yeah, so, so I actually, because I come to a lot of boards, and your reaction is very typical to most boards, like, this is too good to be true, what snake oil are you selling me? So I try to directly address those things. It's a great question, and I'll jump ahead to what that slide's going to say.
Well, I just...
No, I love your skepticism, it's healthy, trust me. So how common are net metering agreements? Again, I'm going to read from this in case people can't read it. Net metering agreements are very common, are the basis for almost all nonprofits utilizing solar for electric bill savings. And it goes to your question about the tax credits. Nonprofits can't take advantage of the tax credits associated with solar, so a net metering agreement allows the owner to take the tax credit and then return a discount to the off-taker. The owner needs the off-taker because without an off-taker, they don't have any place to put the power. So it's a mutually beneficial relationship, and so why it does look like you're getting money for nothing, the owner of the system needs you in this transaction. Yep. That looks like the same one we were just on, sorry.
Okay. This is going well.
I really, I appreciate you doing this, and I don't know what happened to you.
I don't know if it like...
So, this question here is, is this a good rate? And typically, rates range from a 7% to 10% discount. So you're right at the upper range of the normal distribution of discounts for off-takers like you.
Could I ask for potential, very simple question?
Yes, please.
What happens if it breaks?
If it breaks, you don't get...
You just don't get the credit.
You don't get the credits. Everything else is going the same for you.
Okay.
The owner's not going to want it to break because they have this thing sitting there that they're paying for, not generating revenue.
Okay.
Are there operational risks or capital required by, from Newport Schools? No, the system assumes all operational risks and pays for the system. If the system hypothetically failed, we owe nothing, you owe nothing to repair it.
Okay.
And this is all outlined in the contract, so it's not just me talking, but I'm trying to hit the high-level questions that most people want to know. How can the owner afford the discount? The value of the solar array comes from the net metering credits and from the 30% federal investment tax credit, ITC, that solar enjoys. And because the tax credit plays such a significant role in the solar economics, they can afford, the owner can afford to offer a generous discount to the off-taker. Do local communities benefit? And the answer is yes. Each array pays annual property taxes, that is true in this town, for this array. The array construction supports numerous local contractors, provides rent payments to landowners, employees, Norwich Solar employees, keeps local energy dollars circulating within the local economy. And then the constructed array also provides discounts to organizations like yourself that help strengthen our local economy. And the array reduces the need for, particularly in the case of New Hampshire this year, expensive out-of-state power. And reduces your carbon footprint, too. And here's just some sample clients. So the town of Newport, as I said before, Bascom Sugar House, which I think is up in Springfield, the towns and schools of Hartford. We've done everything for them, they're maxed out. Town and schools of Windsor, Vermont, they're totally maxed out. Some of Dartmouth College's arrays, towns and schools of Woodstock, Vermont, again, everything that they can do. Little, small, commercial entities like River Roos Brewery, Springfield Housing Authority, which is a low-income housing authority in Springfield, Upper Valley Aquatic Center, we've maxed out their use of solar. Plainfield, New Hampshire Elementary, Eastman Village Water District, and Granite State Air, if you're up in, ever up in Lebanon Airport, there's a building there, covered wall-to-wall with solar, we did that project as well.
So, I'm going to ask another question?
Yeah.
So I know that Norwich Solar has been here before. Last time, the agreement was to purchase the land. And I don't know if you know anything about that, or what specifically is...
To purchase the land.
The last time they were here, we were asked to purchase, I feel like it was $125,000 or $135,000 in land, and that was just something that, at this time, the board could not do. So I just didn't know what had changed since that time. I don't know if you were part of that, I'm sorry.
I don't know about the land. I think, you know, previously, and I should have, I thought I had it in here, but maybe I didn't. Previously, we had an agreement with the school board that started in 2017, I think it got codified in 2018. And that was for an 8% discount, and I'm trying not to confuse people here. It started off as an 8% discount, and it was, this is a fixed-rate discount, always meaning you're always going to get 10% off. This other, this other one was a fixed, like, 10 cents, 11 cents, 12 cents. So it escalated every year 3%. So you always knew what you were going to be paying the next year, and then it would go up 3% and go up and go up. So that's what the town is on. This one is different. This one is, you always get 10% savings. And I, as a former school board person, like these types of arrangement because it's very straightforward to explain to people, because it's truthful. You're always going to get a 10% discount off the credits that are generated. The other arrangement where the, you have a pegged-in, locked-in rate, so to speak, and it goes up every year, it's harder to explain to people when somebody says, what happens if rates go down? Because rates are probably going to come down in New Hampshire, you hope, after this spike. You can just say with a straight face, we'll always save 10% with this one. The other one, it's hard to know where rates are going to go, and where you're going to be on the upside or the downside. So, the difference between 2018 and now is, this is a constant 10% discount, is what you get.
Are there any other questions from the board?
More of the statement, so as I understand it, our part is really only to guarantee you a customer.
Yeah.
That's all, that's really all we're doing.
Yeah, so there's, there's a net metering agreement, as we saw in here, that I'd like to forward on later this week or so. And typically, I don't want to push the board one way or the other, what I usually ask for at these types of hearings is, if the board is amenable to it to authorize, I'm not sure of the legality in New Hampshire, either the chair or the superintendent upon legal review, and it meets all of your questions, to be able to sign it. And the agreement's pretty straightforward, I would assume you would have your lawyer look at it, but, you know, all of those sample customers that I said there have gone through this process.
Mr. Weaver, the original plan of the town that we voted on hasn't changed, but yet Norwich's stance and presentation has. That is, that is bothersome to me because of the vote overwhelming to go along with the proposal that was there. That being said, I could speak to how important it came to the community. Richard's school, it was proposed that the array was going to go on the ceiling, on the roof. I asked the question, well, if there's a roof problem, who pays to take the solar down? And the question, answer was, the town does. So, that for me was a, an absolute turnoff. Everything that we gained from the solar array, we might lose in roofing the building. So, at that time, I did not support it town-wide. I was called to a meeting of two of the representatives of Norwich and the town manager to express that not wanting to go that road. And when Norwich agreed to take it off the building, the following morning at 8:00 AM, we met to do a whole new presentation to the public via mail, and we mailed it out to undo the first information that they had. And that happened. We voted for it. And then, the town continued on, the town did not. Can you outline for me why the school was dropped from that program?
So originally, there was going to be a large array at the wastewater treatment facility, and then Beaknik Landfill, as I recall, landfill. And then there was potentially one other spot, very small, that was eligible. The first spot, the wastewater treatment facility, through requirements for floodplain, floodway, and maybe potential wetlands as well, had to get shrunk to a much smaller size. Could not legally be built larger. The array on the landfill, EverSource estimated the cost to bring power to that site at, I think, over $1 million, which would have made the site completely unfeasible economically. So, through a series of unfortunate circumstances where each site, through the process, the normal process of going through and understanding how developable the site is, they got weeded out. The wastewater treatment site looks like a great site, and, I mean, it should have been, but, you know, environmental stipulations pulled it back.
That doesn't answer my question as to why we would cut off this town and continue. And their solar array is working under the contract that you have with them. So, the alternative sites, this was a package, as thus the community were looking at. And so, where we got out of that, to me, is bothersome, because I view that as a better contract, better than what I understand of what you have here now. But being unable to read your information and not having any information before the meeting, that to me is unacceptable. I cannot make that decision based on your words. I have to make it on facts and research. So, I would ask the board now in a motion, so I make a motion, that we decide as a board to investigate all solar possibilities, and that all presentations be furnished to the board in writing before a meeting, a presentation, so that we can be well-versed in what's coming at us.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion?
Yeah, I'm just saying, I don't, there's not enough information here for me to make a decision. So I, we have to research this. Anybody could come in and tell us anything, and I'm not going to just sign up for it, because we are representatives of people in this town. Plus, I am curious about the whole town thing, because I know the town's getting, like, super, super cheap electricity, and I know they had to buy that piece of property, so I'm just curious. I mean, sixteen-five is good, should be good for me personally and my house, but for the school, it's a drop in the bucket. So I guess I would need a lot more information about this before we...
Would, would seeing the net meter, the full net metering agreement be part of that that we need to see? Because that would be something that we need to ask him for, as...
Well, we would research all, all possible vendors or people who are in the business. Hanover just had a very large array put up. You know, it's, the time for solar has come, and Henry Ford has made his first car, and but now we have all kinds of carmakers, many years later. So, right now, this board would do the citizens the best deal of all what would be brought to us. So we need to, we need to solicit those presentations in order for us to compare apples to apples and come up with a decision.
So I agree, but that wasn't my question. My question is, is Norwich Solar would certainly be part of all of those. Is the proposal that was given to us, the proposal for the solar net metering agreement sufficient, or do you need us to request the actual net metering agreement? Is what I'm asking you.
I want to read what's there, and I have an hand, and so therefore, I couldn't vote for it, period.
Bill.
Isn't this already being built anyways? It's being built whether we take the free money...
And I know they had to buy that piece of property, so I'm just curious. I mean, sixteen five is good. It should be good for me personally and my house, but for the schools, it's a drop in the bucket. Or I'm just, so I, I guess I would need a lot more information about this before we balance it.
Would, would seeing the net metering, the full net metering agreement be part of that that we need to see? Because that would be something that we need to ask him for as?
Well, we would research all, all possible, uh, vendors or people who are in the business. Hanover just had a very large array put up. You know, it's, uh, the time for solar has come, and Henry Ford has made his first car. And, but now we have all kinds of carmakers many years later. So right now, this board would do the citizens the best deal of all what would be brought to us. So we need to, uh, we need to solicit those presentations, um, in order for us to compare apples to apples and, and come up with a decision.
So I agree, but that wasn't my question. My question is, is Norwich Solar would certainly be part of all of those. Is the proposal that was given to us, the proposal for the solar net metering agreement sufficient? Or do you need us to request the actual net metering agreement? Is what I'm asking.
I want to read what's there, and, and I have an hand, and, so therefore, I couldn't vote for it, period.
Bill?
Isn't this already being built anyways? It's being built whether we take the free money or not. And it's being built on that land. So, um, I, I agree, we definitely want to see the terminology, and obviously, our legal counsel's going to look over any agreement. You know, and we want to fully understand it. But it's not like we can say, we don't want Norwich to build the array on that land. We want somebody else to build that array on that land, because you're already contracted to build that array, right?
Yeah, we're, we actually own the property.
Yeah, so.
But the thing is, you're going to be locked in for 25 years. You're not going to be able to jump to something else.
Well, actually, you can't, he, um.
Cancel it anytime you want.
Well, didn't you, didn't you say that?
From competitive supply contract, you can jump around and do whatever you want from the supply contract, but.
That's EverSource. Not them, but EverSource. You can change from.
Right, we could go to New Hampshire Power or whatever, and then give you that fake thing, and EverSource jumps their rates up on the other side. And it's a game. We all know that. We all can really go, like, that's the concern. That's the thing. We need more, like, I would never vote for anything until someone can answer all these questions. And no offense to U S R, I don't care who's standing there, it's going to be the exact same thing for me. Because I represent the people in the community. They're going to come to me and say, why did you just do that? That's a stupid idea, whatever. So we have to weigh everything together and see, okay, if we do this, is there a downside for us? Are we somehow locked into something that is going to put us at a disadvantage? Maybe not. Maybe this is a great deal, and, and I mean, it sounds it, right? But we have to do our part. It's our responsibility as people on this board.
Would we be the largest taker on this array?
You'd take about half.
Half. And what's our timeline for, if, if the will of the board is to seek other proposals, what's our timeline for you?
Um, I mean, we, we would love to have Newport School on the array, just because I like to have an array support the local community. We'll be building, starting construction on the array, um, this quarter. We're already actively working on the financing right now. If Newport Schools not, uh, this is not, I don't mean this as a threat when I say this. If Newport Schools not signed up, we'll just put, um, other people on the array, uh, for the, for the financing. And if it works out to put you back on in a timely manner, we'll do that.
Okay.
I'm not, I don't say that as a pressure standpoint. I just state that as a fact.
That just gives me the boundaries within which to, to work. And it says, thank you, Steve, Steve pointed out on the proposal we have, it says February 15th of this year. Okay.
So as I understand things, um, you know, I agree, we want to see any paperwork. We want to see a formal proposal before we agree to anything. But we're not really shopping around for another company because Norwich Solar is building that array. It's, it's not like we can call Sunrun and say, hey, you know, Norwich Solar's offering us this, what are you offering us? Sunrun's going to be like, we're not building a frickin' array, you know?
But you still do some competitive shopping, because maybe they're giving 15% or 10%.
But they don't have an array for us to buy from.
Yeah, well, that doesn't matter.
But you're locked in the middle of 25 years.
Yeah, you're locked in for 25 years, so maybe we wait for three years and someone else builds one where we get more than 10%. I, I see what you're saying. I agree with you on that.
I thought, I thought somebody told me that, um, with the town proposal, that the board actually voted to not sign onto the town proposal. I don't know that for a fact, obviously, but I was told. And, and, that's.
I didn't, I didn't want to bring it up, but I will, Bill. Okay, all right. I asked for, uh, I asked that same question, was told that we, we backed out of the deal.
Yeah.
Okay? And this is what I received right here. And, uh, I guess I'll end it this way. These two paragraphs are full of disorganized, uh, information, not correct. Example it was, we were going to get a new roof on Richards. No, we weren't. That's the reason for putting it on the ground, was not to destroy what we had. So, and there was no motion there to actually withdraw. So I say, the original contract that was proposed to the town required land to do it on. So what has happened here now is Norwich has got a piece of land that they can put it on, and they can sell that to anybody but the electricity firm. But that doesn't mean somebody else hasn't got a better deal, and we just need to find a piece of property for it to go on. And that being said, uh, I'll, in full disclosure, I called Norwich and said, hey, I got four acres. I'll clear it. It's all ready, and, uh, to go ahead. When I heard the school was off, then I called and, uh, found, uh, another possible entity to go on. So there are, the, this is such a new thing. Yes, solar has been around a long time, but it is, it's like a plant. You plant it, and then all of a sudden, wow, it begins to blossom. And that's where we are now, particularly because of fuel oil costs and electric, electricity costs. The motivation is, uh, significant now. We need to take this on. It's a long-term, big project. Dot our i's, cross our t's, talk to everybody that we can, get all the information we can before we make a decision. And to, to make this decision because there's a piece of property that someone can put solar array on, that we could use. There's all kinds of property out there. You just need to find the person who's willing to sell it.
That being said, whatever we're going to do needs to be done quickly. Because just like the town proposal, it passes us by. So if you want to start shopping, I can start shopping, you know, like, quick, because February 15th.
Right. Well, I mean, I think that's suitable. Like, that's not like, hey, I need to sign into today. I think that's, for me at least, I feel like that's plenty of time. We've got just, just barely over a month to make sure that legal checks it out and everything is.
Well, legal checks it out, and if, um, what Bert's saying is that he wants to shop for other potential suppliers. That means these other suppliers need to prepare proposals. They need to do design, um, you know, setups. So, you know, so if we're going to start trying to shop other suppliers, well, that shouldn't need to start like six months ago.
It isn't that Bert wants to do that. It's that Bert wants to research and make sure we are doing the right thing.
Yeah.
And with what we got here, with what we can't read, and not having it before us, before a meeting, we can't make a decision now.
So we have, we have a motion on the table. I want to let Steve speak, and then I want to move this along. Yep.
Okay, let me, let me, let me finish here. So the understanding of, of what is out there and what is happening and what deals we can make is important to us doing our job, period. So I'll wind it there.
Yeah, I think it's just a matter of, I, I don't think you're saying, listen, go, you're saying that the possibility's out there. What you're saying is, if I understand you correctly, do your due diligence. Let's look at the contract, the N M A. Let's look at if there's anybody else around us, so that if there is a difference, or if there is something, then it might be like, oh, hey, you guys know that we can call these guys up and get 12%? Maybe it's a different conversation, but not just to say, it's good, because I'm, you know, I'm suspect, just because I need to do more research, because there's tax breaks and everything else, and 25 years is a long time to commit to something without looking to see, and it's needs to be expedient, because we have until, they've asked us. I know you've briefed it, you know, you can be flexible, but by February 15th, and some of this probably needs to be done behind closed doors, right, when we're negotiating contracts and such? And so I think it's a good idea. I think it's a good presentation. It seems like a, it seems like it's too good to be true, like we had already said. But I, I think that it just, it deserves a little bit of some phone calls here and there.
No, that's fine. I will end with this thought. Um, I just had solar installed on the roof of my house. It took the company six weeks to prepare a design present, to prepare the design. So we have until February, if we have until February 15th, um, we, the time doesn't exist for other companies to prepare a design.
Then we need to find that out.
So, um, you know.
I'll, I'll help you out with my competition. There's nobody who designed it. You just need to call for anything. How much are you going to give me for a discount? And then you need to do your due diligence to say, do you have any property? Do you have anything that you can realistically develop? And if they have a better deal, pursue it. I, I have no, I'm not trying to hear a hard sell. This is a good opportunity. We're building this array no matter what. I'd love to have Newport Schools on it, but I'm not, I'm not here to railroad you into it. It's an opportunity that exists.
I appreciate that. Would you be willing to send the superintendent the PowerPoint, just so we can read through it?
Yeah, it, for whatever reason.
Oh, I believe you.
This, this converted every color so that it was difficult to read. It's.
I understand.
It was, it was fine. When I looked at it, when, when I needed to see what you.
It could be, either way.
Uh, see, it, it does print nicely.
Can you also, if it's okay with the board that I'm going to ask this, could I see the, could we see the net metering agreement?
Yeah, I can send you, I'll send you a sample net metering agreement without your names and stuff.
You don't have to put your board in everywhere. Yeah. That's fine.
Great.
So there is a motion to pursue other options, so, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? That's fine. I will make a motion to direct the superintendent to look into other, um, companies to do our due diligence.
If we could also get a printed copy, we want a printed copy of the presentation, so.
Yeah, I just asked for that. Yeah.
Of the PowerPoint.
Yeah, I asked for that. Yeah.
It was pursue other options or research?
Research. Sorry, research.
Pursue means like.
All right, I'll go research. I'll research, direct the superintendent to research other options for solar. No, words matter. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Can I ask how many options you want me to?
How many options? Or just see what's out there, more information?
So. Yeah, like, just call, like, like, what I would, like, if it were me and I were doing it, I would take everything that they had given us. And then I would call anybody that's, uh, I would go and use my search engine of choice and type in solar for central western New Hampshire, and if any companies come up, call them and ask them if they got anything going on, just like.
Right. But how many do you want? Like, you, you give me, like, you may say you want at least three, at least five, at le, how many?
It's usually at least three.
It's usually three. Okay. But I would say just any number, any number of other options gives us more information to make a more informed decision.
Competitive shopping.
Make it five. Just go online and put in.
Yeah, they're national companies.
The most, the most important thing that, that turned me around was what Hanover did.
Yeah, Hanover.
Hanover did, and who they did it with. So.
I can call Alex and find out who we did it with.
Just go, just go online, put it in. It was all right in front of me, and, and I, I looked at that and said, wait a minute now. We, we have to do our due diligence. This isn't, and we had done that before, but with the eradication of the agreement as it was interpreted, gives us a new start.
Okay. All right. So five or more?
There you have the law.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Thank you very much for coming here, holding our questions. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to the bullying agenda. Oh. Okay, Mr. Perlin.
Sullivan County Manager. Back down, Ron. So tonight, joining us is Derek Perlin, our Sullivan County Manager. We're very lucky to have him here tonight. So thank you. If you would like to come up and. You can all come up.
She said Nelson County Commissioner, Derek Perlin County Manager, Matt Legos, National Administrator, and Betty Newlock is Education Minister for the United States.
And, um, so recently, we've been working. Done, um, through a little bit of county money and a USDA grant, we've done some adult ed at both, um, Sugar River, Clermont, and Newport tech facilities. We did some economic development work. Employers told us three years ago they were having trouble finding employees. So we've done a welding class here, HVAC and Clermont, machine tool in Clermont, um, I think some carpentry. Basically, um, trying to, it doesn't get somebody totally ready for employment, but we had, I know we had people from what used to be Eastern Bridge hovering around the welding class, looking to hire the graduates, um, same with the HVAC classes. And, um, and we have employment opportunities, um, at the nursing home. That's going to be part of it, too. And while I'm standing here, um, we have a grant for lead, uh, eradication. So if you guys, um, know of any students, it's highly pointed towards kids. So if you know of a home or something that might be a lead issue, um, it's on the county website. The more kids, the lower, um, income, um, the money's out there. So, um, if in any of your, um, departments or, um, come across, uh, a home that may have lead, um, let us know and we can hook you up with the right people. So about that, I'll introduce the team. All right.
Uh, thanks, Commissioner Nelson. Uh, thank you, Superintendent Magoon, or do I have to call you interim Superintendent Magoon? Thanks, Donna. Uh, thanks to the members of the school board for having us tonight on the agenda. Primarily, I wanted to come and talk about, uh, this flyer, but we had a couple of other things just as a way of updating both the school board and the citizens of Newport who are watching, um, on TV. So I'll start with this. This is a flyer. We're really trying to double down on our, the workforce challenges that we have. As you might imagine, um, healthcare was under quite a bit of pressure just in general, you know, nationwide before COVID. And as a result of COVID, it's gotten even worse. And so we're, we're kind of experiencing the same workforce challenges as Dartmouth Hitchcock and just about every hospital in the area. So we've, uh, come up with this program as one of the ways that we're trying to help, um, fix that. And we know it's not going to be an overnight fix, but we've realized that, uh, the solution lies within. We, we are going to have to grow our own future workforce, uh, at the, at the Sullivan County Healthcare for Nursing. And so this is a, a way for us to try to engage with the younger generation, so Stephen and your peers. Uh, that's the, these are the contacts we're trying to make in all of our local schools. I was at the Clermont School Board last month. We're here tonight and are, and are working to get on a Fall Mountain School Board meeting at some point in the near future. So we're trying to resonate with what we think is important to young people, and that is having a job and a career that means something, uh, more than just a paycheck. It's got to have, um, some sort of social impact. Uh, we think that the, the theme of community service resonates with younger people. And so there are wonderful opportunities in healthcare, and you don't have to go 1,000 miles away and spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to get into that career field. And that's one of the great things about, uh, nursing in particular, is it's not necessarily degree-based, it's licensure and certificate-based. So you can come for this program in particular, get hired as a unit aide. Uh, the minimum requirement on the form it shows, you'd be 14 years old and get paid $16 an hour, which is, which is pretty good for, uh, for that age. Get paid to take our L and A class, which, which Becky is one of our assistant directors of nursing, she teaches it. Um, she also works closely with, uh, Mr. Perry and the Health Science Program here at the Tech Center, uh, and as well as, uh, the folks at River Valley. So one of their, um, staff members used to be, actually, she had Becky's job before Becky did. So we've got great relationships with both, with the River Valley, with the Newport Tech Center, and of course, what we do internally up at the nursing home. So we've got these wonderful building blocks. Now we just have to get the word out to the students and make sure that they're aware that they can launch their career and do it for, for virtually no money down. Uh, you're not talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars of student debt, which I think is also an attractive thing for, for young people these days. And then get your L and A license and start your career in whatever capacity, whether it's full-time or per diem. Doesn't mean that you have to be a captive employee with Sullivan County. Many opportunities. Uh, long-term care is not everyone's cup of tea, but it certainly is a nice way to kind of get some exposure. Uh, and it doesn't mean you have to cap out as an L and A. You continue to get tuition assistance, at least through the county. We have multiple programs to provide continuing, uh, funding for education, get your LPN license all the way up to RN. So it's pretty exciting. So we, actually, we're pretty psyched. We walked down the hallway tonight. We saw one of these on the bulletin board, and I was like, yes, all right, so the word's getting out. But, but we do need the local leaders of the school board, the faculty and administration, and the students to be spreading the word. Uh, we actually have a class right now that Becky started this week. It has seven, uh, people in it. Five are local high school students, three are from Stevens, and two are from Newport. And I think that's awesome. In fact, the last fall, she had a couple of kids from, uh, Newport that have since passed and gotten their L and A licensure. And hopefully will start with us, uh, working on weekends. I don't think they can quit school and come to work for us full-time, but we're going to let them graduate, but. But, so it's a great opportunity. We're going to spread these flyers, it's on our website and just would look for, for your support to help us spread the word. To touch on the adult ed program that Commissioner Nelson mentioned, a couple of years ago, we, we funded $40,000 to do four classes, two in Claremont, two here in Newport. And that was great, but the delegation said, this is fun, but don't expect that we're going to continue this level of funding going forward. So figure out a way to get some other money. So two years ago, we applied to USDA for a $25,000 grant, which we got. We matched it with 15,000 of county money, so we still have the 40. And that's paying for classes that are going to be going on right now. We're actually talking with Mr. Perry about having another LNA course and something else in the spring here in Newport. Beyond that, I think the, one of the things we wanted to get at least to the school board and staff's attention is, what happens after that money's gone and we close out the grant? Because I don't think, based on what I've heard from our county delegation, that there's an appetite to continue funding it 100%. I think there's a possibility for the county to contribute some amount of funding to, to continue these adult ed programs. But really, there has to be support from, from you all to say, yes, we think these programs have value. Yes, we think that there's a, a role for these in our local workforce challenges. Or just for even the adult kind of DIYers, because what we found in some of the classes at the Claremont Tech is that half the students that sign up are just looking to sharpen their skills for things around the house. Like the last plumbing and heating course, there were a bunch of people that were like, boy, this is great. I finally know how to solder pipes without burning my house down. Which I think is also pretty important when you think about, you know, broadly the housing stock that we have in the area. It's great to have people that are empowered to do some self-help. But really, the goal would be to help get people injected into the workforce and support our local employers in various career fields. So, so that's I guess a discussion point. I think as we go forward, if we want adult ed to continue, we've got to figure out a way to get it, to get it funded. I think we can be a part of the solution, but we can't be the entire solution. And the last thing that I wanted to mention is, it's kind of exciting. We, we funded a grant writing capability in our current budget. We put out an RFQ, we got one person to apply for it and we've been working with him to start writing grants. So we've been letting all the municipalities and the school districts know. And Donna has been very aggressive in working with us to try to get some grants done. Now, I don't want to, I want to under promise and over deliver, so we're kind of learning as we go. This, this gentleman has had some experience with grant writing, but he's by no means an expert. But we hope that through this process, he will gain experience and skills and become a really good grant writer someday. So I just been, I just wanted to make the point that Donna and I have been in communication. She's reached out, actually been the, the number one requester of grants so far. It's been pretty cool. So can't promise you that we're actually going to deliver on some of these grants. Some of them are difficult, but, but we're working together and I think that's pretty cool to see a school district in the county, probably historically have never really done much together. But in this case, we are, so just thought that was worth bringing to your attention. Well, we appreciate it more when we start cashing the checks. Are there any questions? Oh, and one other, if I could have one more attack. We are also in a net metering for hydro. It's, it's a smaller scale, it's a five-year contract, but it is, we have found it to be exactly as advertised. Seems too good to be true. And we had Freedom Energy Logistics was, were the ones that approached us. It's a dam that's located elsewhere in the state. It's a, it's a little, do your due diligence, I'm not suggesting don't do it, just sign up because we did. But it's, the accounting of how they do the net metering, it doesn't impact our supply. We still have our supply contract through our broker. We just get a check, it's about $5,000 a year. We've gotten, we're one year into it, so we've had one check so far. So it's, the, the net metering scheme, definitely read up on that. And I think if you do, you'll find that this is probably worth pursuing. But I think the 25-year thing is certainly, those are good questions that you asked. So for what it's worth, we're doing it right now.
Thank you.
The thing about net metering is nothing changes. The amount of power that you use from Eversource is the amount of power that those people can sell to Eversource. So that means you can be here and the other guy can be in northern New Hampshire, can be in Vermont, can be in New York State.
And we'll, we'll learn more about that and it'll be another topic on an upcoming agenda. Okay, so now are we to bullying agenda? Did I correct myself here?
Yes.
Okay.
So as of today, with, on the survey, we have 226 total people that have responded. Out of the 226, 21 of them are family members, 44 of them are students, 61, excuse, yeah, and 61 are, 44 are staff, sorry, and 61 are students. And we have that open until tomorrow, so we still have people that are responding. We did have our bullying forum the other night. We had what I thought to be a great turnout. We had about 20 people attend and it was students, staff and families. So it was really nice to see, we had a lot of really great conversations in looking at what, what our goals are and what we want to do moving forward. I don't know if anyone wants to talk about, because I know both Bert and Tim were, were there. I don't know if you wanted to talk about the forum and your thoughts on that.
I'd love to hear it. First of all, great to hear that there's people that, that keep. Tim, you want to start?
Yeah, we should have, the demos showed up and, yeah, we think we had about 20 people. I'm sure being the fella day and all that, what we're going to have, but you, you turned up a good turnout, some conversation. I know you said we're going to do another one, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah. So, so what we're doing right now, right, is we're going to gather up all the information that, from the survey, from the, the feedback from the parents. We did, Bryn took notes at the meeting, so we do, we have those. Gather all that up and then present at the next school board meeting this month on that information that we have. And then what we're going to do is, we're going to sit down as a team, our admin team, to say, what are some ways that we can approve, improve these things based on the information that we receive from families? And then we're going to create forms, documents, procedures. And then what we'll do is in February, we're going to have another type of forum where the families can come in again. We're going to present the forms to them and get their feedback and talk to them about, you know, things, other things they may see that we need. We've already started doing some of these things. For instance, on our website, we now have, we now have a spot where families can go to, to, to read what the bullying policy is. And so we're going to start putting what the procedures are, what our, it's our policies on there. So we're, we're looking at cleaning it up a little bit for families to make it easier for families.
Bert, do you want to add anything?
Yes, the kids were quiet and there's no bullying in the audience. One young girl sat there with her little set and not a word for the entire program and just as nice as I. And the parents will respect them and brought us good information.
Very good. All right, with that, we will move on to the FFA event.
So Future Farmer, Farmers of America, which is FFA, have sought to, sought approval to attend an annual New Hampshire FFA Leadership Camp in Alton, New Hampshire on January 13th through the 15th, which is tomorrow. And they do, they did get that, you're supposed to have this in a couple of weeks prior too. So they are aware that if it's not approved this evening, that they cannot attend tomorrow. Attendance will include an overnight stay at Brookwoods Conference Center. At this event, students are going to be able to participate in activities that develop leadership skills and deepen their knowledge in the realm of agriculture leadership and the FFA organization. This event encourages students to get out of their comfort zone, network and network with other chapters, national FFA trainers and FFA state representatives. Students will take part in leadership development courses, workshop and activities put on by state and national FFA representatives. There will also be a former FFA meeting and dinner. There will be about 16 to 18 students that will be attending this event with three faculty members or advisors. I fully support, I fully support the students attending this event and I am seeking support from the school board.
How many of we have proven? The FFA trip?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Steve?
How much is it going to cost? And do we have money for it? Is it going to set our whole budget off course since it's the second week of the year? Do we have money for it?
There is something, they, they fundraised and they, so it's not anything coming out of our pockets.
We're just giving them permission to.
Yes, so it's just giving permission for them to attend.
Any other question?
Well, that makes my question less funny.
Stephen, you attend, you, are you part, you're not part of that, are you?
Do, do we know why it's such short notice, but you?
Well, they knew they were going to attend and they forgot because up until this year, they didn't seek approval for overnight trips. And so when I brought out the, the policy and said, we're supposed to have, bring it to the board so that way the board can approve overnight trips, they said, oh.
We, we've approved so many trips, I've approved.
Maybe these are out of state ones that you approved? These are all in-state. I said anytime our students stay overnight anywhere, it's supposed to be approved by the board.
Maybe, maybe I guess I've only ever approved out of state, but I feel like I have approved several FFA trips.
Yeah, and so they kind of lost track of it.
Okay.
So Eric brought it to me the other day and said, he told them that this was supposed to be a weeks ago and that there's a possibility that the board would say.
Mistakes happen, I just, I just want to make sure I understand, but.
So you can mess with them.
We have to take action. So Lisa, did you have something you wanted to say?
So there's also a major classroom for the trade, which I assume is going to be approved. Do we know that happening?
It's happening.
It is happening this year and it will, as we get closer, we'll, yeah, yeah.
With a grant. Great, okay. All those in favor of allowing our FFA to attend the leadership conference? Aye, opposed, abstained? I wish them very, very well and I hope they have a great time. Okay. Open positions, filing for open positions in the upcoming election.
So the correct filing period is January 25th through February 3rd. And we are open at the SAU office from Mon, on Monday through Thursday, eight to four, and then Friday will be eight to five.
Okay.
Just on the third though, right? Right, but it's Friday, the 27th, to when that's the opening, five and 27th.
Right, but this is just for filing, so they can.
This is the filing period.
But I'm just saying the last Friday.
The last, oh, the last Friday is.
Because there's two Fridays involved in that filing period.
I understand. Okay, so the last Friday, the third, is when the SAU will be open till five. Okay, are there any other questions?
For the board and chairman, you need to say what the open positions are at the five.
Yep, yep. And we did that at the, the last meeting as well, but there's the one-year.
But you were also supposed to run it.
You're right, we did. So there's a one-year moderator term. There's one three-year school board member term, that would be for my seat. There is one one-year term, be for Tim's seat that he's currently in. Did I get them all? And a town clerk, one-year term as well, apologize. January 25th through February 3rd. Bert?
This is essentially an apology to the superintendent. I had thought that you could do a three-year term. But 67133, Roman II, small a, school board shall fill vacancies occurring in the school board except as provided in paragraph, sub-paragraph B and in all other district offices for which no other method of filing a vacancy is provided. Pointees of the school board shall serve until the next district election. So you were correct and I was wrong.
Excuse me?
You were correct and I was wrong.
Did you get that, John?
But that's, but that's the first one. And I got her so mad, she hung the phone up on. And that's not true, she did it by accident.
Or she did. Whatever, hell, she's sleeping now.
All right, are there any other questions or concerns about the filing period or the open positions? Very good. Uh, new hires.
Yes, we should have a document for the.
I got it, yeah, correct. I, I got it. I'll at least start the motion. I will make the motion. This is for a family in consumer science, for Christopher Leclerc, BA Step One at 36, 467, prorated to 28, 94, 61. This would be for the middle school. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion, and would you like to introduce before we have any discussion?
Sure, we're really happy to have Chris calling board. Chris is actually, is also our middle school girls A coach and he's doing a great, fabulous job. He has come, you know, already has ideas and plans and the kids are already very familiar with who he is, so we're really excited about having him join our team. He's already, he's jumped in both feet, looking, getting curriculum together, working with the kids. They had that transition from working on the, on the computer and he's really helping them forward with, move forward with that as well. So they were very excited to go from a computer to a real person. So this will make both of our, all of our programs now have actual teachers and not, so we don't have to worry about the computer programs anymore.
Any discussion from the board? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained? Thank you very much. Welcome, Mr. Leclerc. Any resignations for this evening?
No resignations.
Any committee report outs?
What are we going to discuss this? Those in our packets?
No, I, I just put that in because that was Eric brought that up, but if you'd like to speak about it, it's beautiful.
So we are, so I'm reporting out on the CTE renovations. So there's the renovation advisory committee, which I attend, but I'm not a part of. So there is going to be a group getting together and I'm getting to it, but this pamphlet right here is basically a way for us to meet some shortfalls because of the amount of inflation that has gone on with construction costs and everything else. Basically, what we, the town at 80 some odd percent approved last year is not going to be enough on its own to provide what we need to update and modernize our CTE. We were looking to add a program to, for teaching, right? So they put together these nice booklets and really what they're going to do is they're going to go around and we're going to be looking for donations from anybody that has, can afford it. So there's naming opportunities. And this is actually the first time I've seen the, the packets, so I'm looking through it with you. But if you go to the back page, there's naming opportunities, start at 750,000. You have the whole building named after you, if you can donate, anybody? Biddy, you got 750,000.
We'll give you two years, Biddy, if you.
We can make that happen. No, so there, it's, and so there's the renovation advisory committee, a couple of the members are going to get together and they're going to work off of this and they're going to go around and hit up our businesses. We also have in the works, unless I missed a meeting and they canceled it, we're still going to try to fundraise with the bricks. And we're trying to involve the students with that. I'm not sure if you're tracking that, Stephen, but.
I haven't heard any of this, it's around.
Okay, well, where the greenhouse is right now, that's got to get removed off of the side of the building here. We're going to make that into a brick patio. And then just like in sports arenas where you can buy a brick as you walk in to like the stadiums, you can, you will be able to buy bricks. And if you can, it's kind of small, so if you're on screen, but for the board members and anybody in the audience, right here in this little area, this is where the greenhouse used to be. So all these bricks, so there's, there's all kinds of opportunities to, to donate money. But at the end of the day, we're hurting because of, you know, inflation and how it's affected the construction costs. And we have, as a committee, we are not cutting any programs in the sense of all the money is going to improve programs. We have to cut something that'll be, you know, cut the outside of the building like we had talked about before. So we're, we're cutting costs everywhere that we can to ensure that it's professional, it's not sloppy, it's not the cheapest, it's not the most expensive, but it's quality craftsmanship that'll last us 30 years. But we are, as a organization, as a community, we do need to look and see if we have any money to spare with all the other things that we're donating our money for, it's helping out. So it's just another opportunity for anybody who's blessed and fortunate enough to, to give back. The CTE definitely needs it, the future of our children, obviously. The, I mean, just like the county commissioner came, right? We have the LNA's, same types of programs we're doing at the CTE. So I ask the community out there, I don't know which camera's on, but please. So I asked the community out there, I don't know which camera's on, but please. Please open up your checkbooks if you're, if you can, and local businesses is what we're really talking about here. And you'll be getting visited by members of the renovation advisory committee to go over some different things where you can help out and leave your mark on our students in our school.
Do you know when the information will come out about the bricks?
It's going to have to be pretty soon, because we're coming up against some tight deadlines. So like this February, the Norwich gave us, that's like the deadline for everything. Town voting, all that, you know, the budget's got to be done, everything's got to be done by mid-February. I think we can go as late as mid-March when we're waiting. Have you heard from the commissioner? Have you got any good feedback?
Well, so I actually spoke with the commissioner today, earlier today, right before our meeting. He said that he's not going to have all that done until May, but he does not see a problem. He said that he would have already been told if there was going to be a problem. So May is the, the deadline for him with that, but.
With what?
Oh, I'm sorry, the.
1.2 million, we're asking them to add to the state budget to make up for the inflation cost. And that's not everything, that's just to add to, because there, remember, we said we'd pay 4 point, some odd million as a town, and then the state was going to give us 11 million. Well, now we're asking them for like 13, 2, or. I don't know if the numbers are.
And, and we're not the only district doing this. There were other districts that went to the state that are in the middle of the renovation committee that are also seeing these shortfalls and asked the state if there was room in the budget to cover some of the cost of inflation.
Do you have the, the deadline for when the capital budget committee needs?
I don't.
That's where the money comes from.
Right, the cap, for the state?
No, for the, for this project, for the capital budget.
Yes, so he said, right now, when I talk, spoke with the commissioner, I will be going down and I'll bring Eric Perry and I think Ed will come with me as well, to have a, to, to speak at that, at the capital budget hearing, to talk about that, and then they'll vote on it. But he said that's not, he, they don't even have that date scheduled as of right now. So he's, he'll give me a call, the commissioner will give me a call when that date has been scheduled, and so then we'll go down. But he's, he's, like I said, he's thinking May, sometimes in May.
So you are aware that one of your district representatives is on the public works committee that's for the money council?
Absolutely, and I've already spoken to, yep.
So Mr. Perry, and I think, and I don't want to speak for you because you're here, but he has spoken, I want to say to, I want to say everybody but Ms. Ward.
And I have spoken.
Like in the, in the local area.
And I've spoken to Ms. Ward.
Can you sell tax credits for this?
That I don't.
I actually inquired about that, and they said no.
Who was that?
Is it the secretary's, it's through the secretary of state's better business? I did this right when I started, so I can't remember exactly who I called, but it is the tax credit part, and they said that they couldn't match it very well, so that it wasn't an option for us.
Because?
Because they had other projects out there that were more feeding the economy of the, of the state, is what I was told. It wasn't a good match, is what they told me, being a school.
I'm just saying, you would think that feeding your schools that are going to.
I know, but I think it was based on what they had for other projects at the same time.
Seems a bit odd that the Opera House qualifies for tax credits, and I hardly think that they're.
I mean, I can call them again, but I called them in like, I called them in July when I first got here.
I think I, I get somebody else to chat about that.
Okay, I'll try, I'll try again.
Maybe Jay Lucas is helping save and force to help you with that.
Jay Lewis?
Lucas.
Lucas?
Okay. We have no policies tonight?
Let's see, question?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I didn't know you had a question.
So when the absence of significant funds came to light, and we moved ag, et cetera, are all of the suggestions to the community in order to get funding still intact?
The only project portion that was used as a selling point last year that is currently listed as an alternative for cutting if we don't get said funds from either donations and/or the state, actually, we're counting on the state. The commissioner has kind of implied not just Donna, but in other circles, but shouldn't be an issue. Previously, when you talked to him again, so that backs that up. But the roof, to answer your question. We still have the roof as in play because they came out and they courted. Last year, when we used it as in that it needs to be repaired, the, when they came out and courted, they said that they think we have at least 10 more years. And so with, like, they didn't give us an exact sentence, so not that they think that we have, they, they said 10-plus years on it. So that is an alternative now, because now that gives us 10 years to come up with the $400,000 for the roof.
Okay, so my understanding, the original shortfall was a million and a half, originally?
Yeah, well, yeah, so the one point.
And, and the state is now giving us 1.2?
So what?
Well, we're, may have.
I won't say, I wouldn't say that until it's in the bank account.
Right, like, the, so if the state doesn't give us that 1.2 million, then we're going to have to cut $900,000. So there's like, there's some if ands, there's some contingency plans to move forward, but we have a list of alternate items right now that if we don't get any of the donations, then we cut the roof, we cut the elevator, there, you know, there's things that don't affect education per se that we cut. Now, if they don't give us the 1.2 million that the commissioner seems to think the, that's going to make it into the new budget, then not only do we have to cut $900,000, so we have to come up with 200 more thousand off of what we already have as alternates, then we have to cut something else, which might impact education. So with that being said, I think that's why when it was written up and presented to the commissioner, it was, this is, we need to get this done, because we're not, there's not a lot of fluff in this project. There's not space-age technology, right? It's funded education for, you know, for technical schooling.
I have a hard time with the state's purpose. Is to support and expand the CTE centers statewide. And so we became eligible, and we voted for, based on the best knowledge that was there. The state is very cognizant of the increases and problems. And if they do not come up with the money, I'll be damn surprised, because their, their job is to support and do, and they know the communities that they're trying to put the centers into are some of the communities that need the most help. So.
Would you really be surprised? I mean, they only toss $4,800 to educate a child.
Glad you said it. Not me.
Come on, that was like, that was a lump sentence, Spike. But that's kind of what the commissioner and his office has alluded to when Mr. Perry or Donna have spoken.
So was the 1.5 million his first offer, and then his back opposition was the 1.2?
No, it's all, we've always asked for the same.
Yeah, it's always been 1.1.2. With us, you know, providing some.
A minute, I'll look back and tell you.
Our share.
Our share.
Unequal percentage to what we've contributed in the beginning.
Right.
Okay, well, that's fair. But to ask, all right.
Do you know who your competition is?
Yes. Well, he said it's, because I asked the same question, if it was competition, and he said, no, Wintisquam School District has, is also under the same thing. And so I said to him, well, is that competition? And he said, no. Why? I said, because I live in the Wintisquam School District, and I would be more than happy to, to send a flyer. So no, we don't have a, so he said, it's not really a competition.
The interesting thing with Wintisquam is whenever they, the commissioner's office had contacted them before we contacted the commissioner's office, it's kind of like how we had talked about with some supplies or leveling out and everything else, so the commissioner's office is like, oh, you're fine, everything's leveling off. And it's like, well, wood has leveled off, but now aluminum or whatever else is skyrocketing, you know what I mean? So like, one starts to steady out, and then another project or product gets inflated or whatever, however that works. So, these are good flyers, and anybody knows anybody with some cash, I'll make sure Mr. Irwin gets one of these. But thank you for the opportunity to brief. And Mr. Perry and the, well, Valley Brenzinger architects are working hard, and they're incorporating student and teacher feedback. It seems like, you know, now it's, you can't really change the, the design, but there's like the equipment, so they're still meeting and going over all that. So appreciate the hard work Mr. Perry has and the time he's put into this.
Absolutely.
Did we get the approval on these, sir?
Do we get to what?
Get approval from the planning board?
Well, it wasn't an approval, it was information. But the answer's yes.
Oh, awesome.
All, all of the criteria was, was there, and the presentation was fine and complete.
But these are hot off the presses, these just came in, I want to say, on two, Monday or Tuesday this week. So that's why I haven't seen one. I think they're electing the duties, they just came in.
Okay, any other committee report outs? I don't think any of them. Okay, communication, let's start with administration.
Sure, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna put Lisa on the spot on this one. Dancing with the Stars is going to be at the Opera House on?
27th to 28th.
27th to 28th. So we're asking people to please come out and support. We have students and staff that will be taking part in that, so we're really excited. We do have a, the flyer and information regarding it going out to all staff and community members tomorrow. So thanks to Lisa. Lisa sent an email and said, can we get this going? And I said, absolutely, so thank you, Lisa, for that. We have that going up.
Okay. Anyone else? It always is. Anyone else? Anything from the board?
I need it.
Okay.
No, 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 I don't, just going over that.
So I guess people just want to, really need to get together, report, strategize, and figure out how, you know, we got to sell this budget for this year before the deliberative session. It's imperative that we manage to get this budget passed, especially with Paris contract in there, and that if, if we can't, we're just going to step back again. You know, it's equally as important as last year, we didn't have the CTE to pass. And I don't think we're asking for a huge amount of money here, it's kind of just an inflation difference. That was one thing. I just, I've had some people reach out to me about some of the things that they've been, come up in school, what is teaching like binary, non-binary stuff. I'm just not sure why, or we're getting on that train. So I have some concerns about that, that I've had people reach out to me this week about. Donna's answered some of the questions on a few of the things, but it's concerning.
Go.
So I have given this a lot of thought, and when I say I've given this a lot of thought, I mean, I've been thinking about it right up until this moment. I knew when I agreed to accept a seat on the board, that it was going to be very, very difficult with my working schedule. I had an option several times over the year to change my schedule to where I would always have Fridays and Saturdays off. The give for that take would be that I would work the 2:00 AM shift, Sunday through Thursday. Working the 2:00 AM shift for me means getting up at about 12:15, 12:30 at night to get ready for work and to go to work. Because of the work I do, I need a full night's sleep. So that has me going to bed at 4:15, 4:30 in the afternoon. All well and good, I currently do it a couple days a week. Problem is, my wife gets home from work between 4:15 and 4:30 in the afternoon. So when this first started, and I first started talking, I was talking to the other driver who has that run, and we worked out this arrangement where on board weeks, you know, we would swap shifts, he would pick up my Friday, and I would take his Sunday. And that worked really, really good for most of the year. I'm sure people have noticed, towards the end of the year, you know, I think I had to miss, what, two meetings? I attended another meeting by taking a day without pay for the following Friday because I wasn't able to get it covered. So this is kind of where my life breaks down. If I keep my current schedule, I kind of do this job half-assed. If I take the other schedule, which actually I just passed on today, so it wouldn't be for another three months, then I do my home life half-assed. And neither this job or my home life should be done half-assed. So if I have to choose which I'm going to prioritize, and if I have to tell you what my choice is, then I feel sorry for you.
Hang on, hold on.
Yeah, no, not at all. You know, I apologize. A lot of people supported me in the election, you know, and it felt really great. And I'm really proud, I mean, obviously, you know what I'm saying. I'm really proud of a lot of what was accomplished this year, you know? I can work with Burt, you know, that's huge.
Quarter of your head.
Yeah, I know, exactly, exactly. The support staff contract, you know, that's amazing. So I am stepping off the board. I don't know if there's time to list my two years on the ballot. What I would like to do is stay on at least through the deliberative session, because I do want to do my part to promote the budget. I, I've been kind of contemplating a social media post for shortly before the deliberative session, and thought about reaching out to Steve Smith at WCNL to see if I can get on there on a Monday morning, just to kind of talk a little bit, if anybody wanted to join me. But, but I think that's probably it for me. Really, I'm not, you know, I thought about, you know, staying all the way right up until the election, but with the deliberative session on February 4th, I'm not going to be able to make our second meeting in January, because I can't do two weeks in a row. First week of February, I'm out of town, you know, not coming home early for it. So that really would leave two meetings that I might be available for. You know, yeah. I'm tired. For me to be able to make this meeting tonight, I worked seven days last week in a row, Monday through Sunday. Monday because we had a student move for Dartmouth College, and then Sunday because we had to swap to have tomorrow off. So I apologized, Lisa particularly. I really, probably never should have said yes. You know? No, no, I appreciate, I really, really appreciate the vote of confidence. And I like this. If there was, if this worked in my life, I would probably be here for 10, 15 years, because I do enjoy this. This is the kind of thing, really, and, and I think Jenna working full-time probably This is the kind of thing, really, and I think Jenna, working full-time, probably understands this as well. This is difficult to work around a full-time job and a full-time family life. So, it may be a little easier with people who are retired or semi-retired. I know you have some flexibility with your scheduling. It's very difficult otherwise. And really, it's just that meetings are very difficult, not to mention everything outside of the meetings, which wound up being a lot more than I thought it would be. So, I don't know if there's time to add a two-year term to the ballot. If not, I am certain the board will be judicious in appointing a replacement. Like I say, this will be my last public meet. This will be my last one of these meetings. I will be present for the deliberative session and I'm willing to stay available for those last couple of weeks afterwards if you want me to, or if you want to appoint somebody after the deliberative session, whatever the board wants to do. No hard feelings at all. So, yeah.
I think the situation is if you resign before the posting, then there will be a vacancy and that can be done. But that's a questionable concern. Because you have not posted the positions yet, so if your resignation is effective before the posting, then that will create a vacancy in connection with your decision.
But I don't know, because if his resignation is after the deliberative, then...
Correct. If you don't do that, then there is no opportunity for it.
I appreciate it, Steve. I understand.
I'm Bill.
Oh, my gosh. Bill. I was the second. I understand Steve, but I understand...
They've forgotten me already.
I have a tight haircut over here.
My United Board Chair. Bill, I understand. And I thank you for the amount of thought and I thank you for the amount of time and the amount of care that you've put into this position. Okay, Frank, you're up next.
Just throwing names out there.
Well...
I thought somebody did.
This sucks. I've already told the superintendent and I've told Steve that there's a good chance that I'm gone. The main reason for coming here, because I thought it was messed up. Got here and found out it was really messed up. And now I see it headed in a good direction. And I haven't made my decision, but I had told the superintendent my decision would be after March. I was gonna follow at least this through till March. But now you make it tough for me because that means we have a major turnover again and that's not easy to do. But that being said, a lot of people probably like to see me go. And I don't mind that. I never cared about that. What I care about is things run good and as best they can.
Now, Burt, we all know you're not going anywhere. You're going from this table to that podium.
No, no. I'm being right point-blank out about it right now. I call it the fireman. I put my notice in here and I'm out in March and I'm... My name is on for selectmen because we... That's where the next problem is. But that all being said, I don't want to see this fail. So, now, to me, the biggest thing is, and I wrote right down here, our plan. And I talked to the superintendent about it. We need to have a plan because we're looking for $700,000 more money. That's a dollar per thousand right there. And the majority of that is support staff. So, if our problem in education is we're at the bottom of the barrel, how are we gonna come up? With what we've been doing hasn't been working. We can change how we administer, but we won't see a return that is sufficient to change the trajectory to move us up quickly. Support staff, when you gave me the number, I thought it was too high. And I still think it's too high. But we have no choice. If we do continue to do what we have been doing, we will fail. And that's not fair. So, we need a plan. We, as a board, need to plan every step we're gonna take. You mentioned the radio on Monday. You can go on any Tuesday. Any of us. I just take that big fella, Onella, and just give him a cardi chop and he'll let us on. So, we can do radio, we can do flyers, we can do all kinds of things. We need the NTA to understand that if, in fact, we do not approve the support staff raises, then as a community, what are we gonna do when your turn comes? So, you have the power, the people, Virginia, enlist her. Put her to work. We, as a community, have to understand this. I said to the superintendent, I'll pull out a flyer and put it right in front of the people there and say, here's what they wanted. They wanted $5,000 a thousand this year and they didn't get it. They wanted $455,000 this year and didn't get it. Put that right in front of everybody that's there at the deliberative session and say, they asked too much. We're asking for over... Just over a buck, not quite two. And if we really understand where we are in the totem poles of things... Virginia, you remember the poll I ran up at one...
Oh, my gosh.
Town meeting? I can do that again, but I don't think I need to.
An actual poll?
An actual poll.
I think you need to.
Physical. No. Please.
It was a surveyor poll.
Surveyor thing, you know, so it was mine.
Extend, right? And I put it up there, 200 and some odd positions, and here's where we and everybody else was. And it made the front page of the newspaper, but people came to vote. I don't know whether that was up or down that year, Virginia, did you?
I believe it was down.
I think it was, yeah. In 1990. So, we need a plan. The board needs a plan. We need to ask the NTA, the support staff, everyone that's there. Bring their in-laws, outlaws. If their husband doesn't want to come, drag him. It has to have that kind of effort because when we said, sat here as a board and said $2 was the limit, it was a different economy then. The light bills now have doubled. The tax bills for some have gone up high. So, the economics have dropped down and our position is up here where we thought we could do well. So, we have one of two choices. We either need to lower this and fail, or we need to bring everybody out and get it done.
I think...
So, I guess I'll say this. I'll be a happy camper if it passes and I'll leave. So, there's Americhino Cherry.
My God, there's a challenge.
Come on, you guys can't...
They're setting more. This is a done deal.
I just said it all, didn't I? And that'll allow me to go pester somebody else, maybe. So, that's the rest of the story, people.
I really think it should be fairly easy to promote this budget. I mean, because everybody's... Everybody's cost are up. You know, I mean...
Like, $200,000 of that increases utilities.
Yeah, exactly. You know, and so everybody's costs are up. So, everybody needs to understand that our fuel is up, our electricity is up. And, you know, the increase to the support staff, goddamn, their expenses are up too, you know, at home. And so, if we want to attract and retain staff...
Why aren't you trying to sell 98 cents? Because defaults and increase 85 cents, right? Am I correct in that?
It's down a buck-ish. Takes a buck off.
Yeah, I think it's like, yeah.
So, there's the reward for the person who doesn't want to pay.
Yeah, so...
Seven hundred thousand.
But I think we can... That should be an easy sell.
So, I make a motion that we come up with a plan, what we're gonna do and how we're gonna do it. I've been on the other side of the podium and done it a few times, and it takes an effort, but it gets things done. So, to sit here and just say, hey, we're gonna have a public hearing on this and that's what the budget is, and then we're gonna wait for the delib to come around, to me is failure. We can't do that.
Well, I think that we probably would after we properly brief the budget, right? Because then there should be more pointed questions if it's... If I understand the way it needs to be briefed, we'll be able to say, hey, Diane's gone, taken the budget, and we're now line by line. We can see everything, so it's gonna look like there's some crazy stuff going on, but we're gonna show you we've taken all these things out. And I think we have the slides. It might be just as easy as those 12 slides that show this includes two new teachers and moving all of our technology fund over to Chad. So, that should... I think that should answer the question when the citizens are looking at it. So, once that's done, and if we don't get any pushback or somebody may bring something that we totally didn't see or, you know, then after that, we should develop how we're gonna brief it. If, I mean, Bill... Well, Bill. Will? See, she did it with the Frank and Steve. Now, I'm like...
Call me George.
But you know the... You know that contract and you're passionate about it. And so, that's gonna be part of the brief. So, I would suspect that you brief that.
Absolutely.
And, I don't know, do y'all normally rehearse it together before? I would suspect there...
I think we need to.
I would suspect that there's not a rehearsal. But, okay. I'll stop talking then. I'm... That's the military guy.
Is that a symbolic motion? Because to have a motion to come up with a plan, is there a second, I guess?
He hasn't got one.
Well, I know what Burt's trying to say, and I've said it too. And I don't know if we need the motion. I just want... It needs to happen, though.
That I can be on board with.
I mean, so, we all need to agree that it needs to happen.
There might be one more meeting with the chairperson.
Like, we need to... Especially for the deliberative, but up to the deliberative session and at deliberative session especially, because that's when a majority of the questions are gonna come about. So, next Tuesday, there's gonna be a few people here, a few, like tonight, I imagine. It's the deliberative session when everybody's gonna show up. That's when we need all our answers. The presentation has to be flawed. Like, this is why, because the lights, gas is up, $200,000. This is a part of it, this, you know? So, we can show all these things to everybody. There's no pork on our budget like the federal budget. This is bare bones, trying to keep the lights on, keep the doors open. Originally, you guys asked for, it was like six something, and we laughed at you. And then we said, 250, we think we can sell. We're confident you came in at $87. Like, we were like, awesome. You made it easier. $85. So, you've done your part. We've done our part looking through it. Now, we all have to sell this budget. And like I said, the nice thing is, what, a dollar two off the default budget? So, it's a dollar per thousand increase to, you know? It's not significant at all. Years past, we've had huge increases. And we're confident that we're gonna get what we need to get out of this, especially with the Paris increase. I think that's huge. When our staff's, you know, 17 positions short, and you can go to McDonald's and make more money.
Well, you heard tonight, 14 years old.
You can make more than 14 years old.
Yeah.
They were making more than I was when I was a substitute here at the school. Seriously. More than double.
Well, to the guy over here at the end, somebody calls and he's got a problem with drainage and you say, yeah, I'm in the car, I'll stop over. Maybe the plan would have been that you went home and got the truck, you know? It's hindsight is 20/20. And to the military man here, all of a sudden, you've got a problem and you gotta attack and the tanks are being made by somebody else over here and they're not made. We... I'm not talking that it's a lot of work, but a plan. Who says what? Who goes on the radio? Who does what? If it doesn't pass, we fail because the support staff raises, go down the toilet. And when that happens, guess what?
If you don't approve, possible?
Lisa, did you want to add one?
I'm pretty ugly and I want to just... It's easy for people to understand, it's a little easier, not super easy, but it's a little easier to pass a teacher contract. People understand what teachers do. What we all need to do is really help educate everyone, what do they mean by support staff? And why are they essential? And why essential now? Because even, I'm not as old as Mr. Spalding, and even when I was in school, there was no such thing as parents or support staff. So, to help everybody understand how they're gonna help us include and not having them... Right now, Richards, we're down 11, and since the beginning of November, we've lost six support staff because of COVID. But I don't think the general public understands, we say support staff, what does that mean? What do they do more than put them to us? So, that's something that we all need to...
She'd be part of the plan.
Steve? I'm gonna comment about this because it's amazing to hear you particularly support an increase in the budget. And I appreciate that. You've totally done your homework. When does the next new board time come out?
Well, it just came out, so...
Just came out this week.
Sorry. When does the next new board time come out? It just came out, so it's probably not gonna be for another month.
It's probably March, or it's two months, I think.
Right. So, the deadline for an article might be like now. And maybe that's where you... Because everybody gets it. It comes in the mail, it's free, about who are the support staff? What does that mean? I know people read that. That's free. So, I mean, that's something that you really need to take advantage of. I have no idea the timeframe, but I know that it's a wonderful marketing tool.
I'll just say, like I always do, as parents, be responsible for your students. You parents, guardians, families that are raising and responsible for these students, children, they're your responsibility. So, just take pride and make sure that you're doing your job as a parent.
Thank you.
Be involved, is what I'm saying. Be an active part of positivity, because that kind of sounded negative, but...
Okay. Well, not how I thought the night would go. Oh, John, go ahead. I'm sorry.
You mentioned radio, you didn't mention MTV. We have a lot of people who watch on Facebook. So, there's a good, real advantage to coming in, giving an interview, doing a group thing, whatever, obviously not the majority, but a couple of people come in and do, I think, we get a lot of views on MTV on Facebook. And we've learned stuff through our TV and everything, so use us as well.
I have to say, not how I thought the night was going to go this evening. The first thing I'd like to do is apologize for the budget here to Mr. Kestrel. He's absolutely right. Burt is right. Biddy is right. We will get that corrected and we will get that fixed by Tuesday so that everybody understands. So, I will absolutely take responsibility for that.
I really hope that the Math Night is going well at Richards tonight. I am... It's not on tonight? Oh. Great, because I couldn't go. Great. Yay! I hope it goes... I hope it goes well, or because I wasn't gonna have the opportunity to take my son. But I'm very excited. Richards is opening their doors. It was gonna be for the next three Thursdays. I guess we have an extra one to have students at different grade levels come in and participate in Math Night. I just got my flyer for the 100th day... come in and participate in math night. I just got my flyer for the 100th day, 100-day activity and competition for the kids to design projects for 100 days of school. And I was excited to see that we'll be back in and can walk through. So it's just nice to see the school feeling a little bit more open and, and back to pre-COVID. So I'm glad it was canceled. I will look forward to going. And thank you, Bill, again. I, I really wish you all the best. I know you're not going anywhere for a bit, but.
I will likely be back.
We will continue to, to do our jobs. So, all right. With that, we do not have a non-public, so I would move that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. Have a wonderful evening, everybody.
It's the first time I've ever seconded something that fast. I usually defer to you, gentlemen.
Yeah, that's usually me.